Hello, everybody.
Ooh, sorry.
I'd like to call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting at December 9, 2025. Staff, could you please call the roll?
President Vediver?
Here.
Vice President Govindarajan?
Here.
Alder Ughair?
Here.
Oh, I'm not doing the thing. President Vediver is here. Vice President Govindarajan is here. Alder Ughair is here. Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Madison is here. Alder Matthews? Alder Matthews?
Sorry, here.
Alder Matthews is here. Alder Lankella?
Here.
Alder Lankella is here. Alder Tischler?
I'm here.
Alder Tischler is here. Alder Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is here, and we have quorum.
Wonderful. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 28, 2025. May I have a motion on the minutes? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to recording? A unanimous vote in favor of the minutes? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote to approve the minutes from October 28. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any registrants?
We do not.
Excellent. Next is disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, let's move on to the agenda. First item is the state lobbying update by the Welch Group.
Oops, I'm sorry. Perfect. I know my family's knee-deep in preparations for Christmas and the upcoming holidays, so I hope all of your families are doing well. Just to give you a... I'll try to make this as quick. I know you guys have a busy agenda, but I'll try to make this as brief as I can. So, right now, going on in the state Capitol, it's December, so lawmakers have broken after the Thanksgiving... Before the Thanksgiving holiday, they broke for session until it picks up again in January. There is some activity going on in the Capitol with some hearings and some execs, a lot of bills being introduced. We were just talking about this before the meeting started about how lawmakers tend to, unfortunately, sometimes wait till the last minute. You have, you know, 14, 15 months in order to get things across the finish line, and often they wait until the last two or three to try to get things through. Doesn't always work well, so it's always better if we... If they start working on this stuff earlier. But it's been a really... As I've talked to you folks about before, it's been a really slow session. To date, I think we have only 82 bills have been signed into law so far. That's out of hundreds that have been introduced. I haven't seen the last count, but it's at least 6, 7, 800 bills that have been introduced, probably a little bit more than that. So, it's a very, very light session as far as actual things getting signed into law. Obviously, earlier this year, this summer, the budget was signed. Big win for us on the municipal services payment. We've talked about that in the past. Right now, I handed out the tracker to everybody, and I hope everybody that's virtual has seen a version of this, just to give you an idea of the breadth of bills that were following, were opposing, or were supporting. Most of those are still in the process. So, the housing package, I know we were very interested in. Just to give you a brief rundown on where those things are at. AB 194 was the WEDA bill. That was to correct a program that was put in place in the last session that had over $500 million worth of incentives to help spur housing developments. The big problem that developers were running into is, under the law that was passed, they couldn't stack incentives. So, without being able to stack incentives, it didn't pencil out for them, so nobody was really taking advantage of that funding. Both committees in both houses have passed this. I believe it will pass the Assembly. The Senate is kind of an issue on this one. That's going to become a familiar refrain as we move forward, that the Senate is kind of the problem on some of this stuff, getting actually across the finish line. So, we supported that bill. Again, it passed both committees, ready for floor action in both houses, but the Senate... The fate in the Senate is somewhat uncertain. AB 182 is changes to the low-income housing tax credit. We support that as well. That passed both committees and is available for scheduling. AB 454 was the workforce home loan program. Support that. That also passed both committees, available for scheduling. AB 453, that's a bill that we're following on putting a little bit more regulatory action behind the comprehensive plan. That one passed the Assembly and the Senate Committee, available for scheduling, but I haven't seen anything as far as when that might come up. The one bill, AB 452, that was on plat approvals and self-certification of infrastructure. We supported that bill. That passed both houses, and it was signed into law today. So, hey, we got one so far. That's more than what a lot of people outside the building can say at this point. Then we had some local government bills. AB 483 was a wheel tax referenda. We opposed that. That did pass the Assembly Committee. It hasn't gotten through the Senate Committee yet. I assume that that probably will find its way to the floor, at least in the Assembly, if not the Senate. Very comfortable that the governor would veto that bill if it got to him. AB 424, the rental of mobile homes and regulating the rental of mobile and manufactured homes. We supported that. That was also signed into law today. And then, AB 217 on bidding thresholds, it passed the Assembly Committee, passed the Senate Committee. In the Senate, I have to figure out what's going on, because it was passed, available for scheduling, and that was referred to the committee on org. So, I got to figure out why that's the case. AB 165 was a bill that prohibited local guaranteed income programs. We opposed that. The governor vetoed it, I believe, on Friday. And then, AB 211, we were following, which was a bill to allow for more cigar bars. That was an interesting one, because that had bipartisan support, I believe, in both houses, but the governor vetoed that on Friday as well. So, again, really light, 82 bills signed into law to date. Just not a whole lot of bipartisan action going on, unfortunately. As we look ahead to the few remaining months in the legislature, again, December, they're on break. They'll come back in January. I expect that the Assembly will be a little bit more active than the Senate. They'll be in a couple of days, at least in January, probably a couple of days in February. End of February, they'll gavel out and go home for elections. The Senate is more than likely what we're hearing is they'll do one day in January, one day in February, and then kind of a catch-all day at the end, sometime in March. So, the Senate always kind of goes into March, and then they end up being the body that either gets things across the finish line or doesn't, depending on what they do that day. And then, as we all know, Wisconsin's kind of battleground central for elections, so we're going to have another long election year next year. Obviously, on the Republican side, there's two candidates, Josh Shulman, who's county exec up in Washington County, and Tom Tiffany, congressman from the Northwoods. And then, the Dem side, there's too many to keep track of. I don't even know to date who's running, but obviously, the biggest name that got into the race recently is Mandela Barnes. I expect... I didn't see if Joel Brennan got in yet, but we're expecting that news any time now. So, it'll set up a real... I mean, that's a diverse group of folks, and it's going to set up a very interesting primary on the Dem side. You know, the biggest thing that they're going to have to combat, or at least be cognizant of, is with that big of a field, how far to one side are the candidates dragged prior to the primary, and does that hurt them come general? So, it's going to be a fascinating year to watch. There's obviously going to be a lot of money spent in this race. I know Mandela Barnes was saying he thinks he'd need to raise almost $50 million. Tom Tiffany was saying somewhere between 30 and 40. I expect whoever comes out of the Republican and Dem side, that's probably going to be pretty close to what the number is, which is, on its own, it's a little scary that we're spending this much. You know, we've seen this over and over again in Wisconsin with Supreme Court races and state legislative races. I mean, when, you know, when a state legislative race for an Assembly candidate that represents about 60,000 people has more than $2 million in spending, you know, when you take both sides into account and third-party groups, something's wrong, right? And it's becoming more of a problem, and these outside entities are having more and more of an influence. So, as we get to the... You know, we'll continue to push on our priorities between now and March, when the legislature gavels out. You know, on the housing bills specifically, I should mention that on the Senate side, there's more... There seems to be more of a concern with the bills that provide financial incentives. There's a philosophical issue with some two members on the Republican side that just don't believe in that. So, I think at some point, in order to get these bills passed, Senator Lemahue will have to make the decision on whether he gets rid of the rule of 17 and just allows the bills to come to a vote, which I'm hopeful for wide variety of different reasons. There's a lot of good legislation out there that's being held up by one or two members, and it's not real great for our state. And then, just wanted to follow up on our lobby day that we did in September. What was that? Okay. Time flies. But we met with our... A group of Alders came over, appreciate everybody that took the time out of their day to do that. I thought it was very productive, just being able... I mean, more so than anything else, is to either develop or continue to develop relationships with our, especially our area lawmakers. Really important, I think, not only for them, but probably for you guys as well, you know, to have that good relationship with your state-elected officials. Would like to plan another one in January, so if we can get another crew of people that has some time, you know, like the third Wednesday of the month, something like that, when the legislature's going to be in session that week, but typically not on Wednesdays, might provide us another opportunity to put new faces in front of lawmakers. So, hopefully, we can continue to do that, because I think I truly believe I... We can be your eyes and ears on the ground in the Capitol, and we can be a big help, but you guys are the best salesmen to your local elected officials. You guys having that relationship, talking to them about the impacts of their policy decisions on the city, on your districts, there's nothing more valuable than that. So, we'll look to set something up with like that, with whoever's available, and continue to have those conversations about things that are kind of left on our list of priorities that we want to get done before the end of session. So, with that, any questions?
I had two quick clues that may answer some questions. Sorry, I'll get to the mic so people can hear. Just in case, these are things that come up. I handed out to folks who are here. Sorry, environment, but I already had this paper printed out, so it was no new trees, Mayor, if you're watching. And for folks online, I think you got an electronic version. This is what we call a leave behind. This is what we literally left behind at the legislative offices, so it gives you a little bit of a sense of the level at which we're discussing things. If you look at the back of it, it has a very condensed version of our legislative agenda. I was going to put in quotes, but it is our legislative agenda. It's just, these are our top priorities, as you see from the tracker Jim handed out. We are following a huge range of things that impact local government, but these are the top things we're advocating for. So, take a look, you know, review it, and if there are items that you feel are... We have questions about, or that you feel are missing and would like to be added, understanding that not everything is going to make sense as a priority, because it's not allowed, or it's not feasible, or it's not, you know, doesn't rise to a level of that, please get in touch with our office, or with leadership, or with Jim, or even better yet, all three of us. And just on the legislative lobby day, we'll send out an email about scheduling that. Right now, we're thinking it'll be the second half of January. That's probably the best time to get folks, so maybe third week of January. And typically, a kind of middle of the week, so like a Wednesday, when folks are not on the floor, that is to say legislators are not in floor session, but are relatively likely to be in the building. I'm looking at our colleague who works in the building and hoping that they have a sense of when people will be around, so we'll try to make sure that folks are around. I think, as Jim said, it'd be nice to get some... A different set of folks who maybe weren't part of the first lobby day, so hopefully some people are available. But again, let us know, or let leadership know, and Karen, or all of us, if you're interested in that.
So, obviously, we'll be watching the elections carefully and what happens in November 2026. You know, there's a lot of sentiment that the Senate is likely to flip. Governor, I would probably give the advantage to a Dem candidate coming out. The Assembly, we're just not sure of. Depends if there's a big blue wave. The Assembly could flip as well. I think that's less likely. So, one of the things that we have to work on, and we have to be cognizant of, is what happens in a scenario where it's Dem Senate, Republican Assembly, Dem Governor. You know, we might get the impression that it's way easier to get our stuff done, but it's also easier to kind of get screwed on some stuff, right? Because you've got... If you've got Democrats and Republicans negotiating, each side getting a little bit of something, we just have to be careful that whoever... We don't have bad stuff happen to us in exchange for things that might help us marginally. So, that's one of the things that we'll be looking at going forward as well. Any questions?
Alder O'Brien.
I didn't...
Well, now you got to come up with a question.
Okay.
All right? Nobody? Wow, you guys were easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we're going to move on to item three, Legislature 90754, repealing Section 33.28 of the Madison General Ordinances related to the City, County, Schools Collaborative Committee. And I am not sure if Deputy Mayor Baumal is going to be talking to us. I can...
I am on video, and I'm happy to do so, if that would be helpful.
I think so.
Okay. Well, I can share that this goes back to a presentation I gave at CCEC maybe two to three months ago, and really goes back to a process that's about a year old at the Common Council, where we were looking at a number of committees and whether we could reduce some or combine some for a variety of reasons. And at the time, we passed an ordinance, this was in March of 2025, an ordinance that was making changes to a number of committees, and a resolution directing staff to look at a few more closely. And this was one of those committees that was in the resolution that we were asked to look at more closely. Specifically, we were asked to look at whether the staff management of this should change from being in the city's ownership or with the school district's ownership. When that was brought up at the City, County Schools Collaborative Committee, the conversation morphed a little. It morphed into something bigger. So, the question of who should own it, who should staff it, was investigated. It was investigated with the school district. It was not something that they were... They felt they had the means to take on at the time. But it generated a larger question of what's the scope? What's the work plan? What's the purpose? Is this a committee that is... That should remain as an operating committee? Recognizing that while there are issues that merit collaboration, most of those collaborations happen in a number of other forums, and there's a lot of redundancy with work that happens in other committees as well, depending on what the issue or topic is that's identified. After a lot of discussion and thought, the co-chairs of that committee put out a letter to the elected bodies of the county, the city, and the school district, saying that they would recommend that they dissolve unless, by some date certain that was given, members of these bodies came to them with a desire for them to work on something concrete that felt within their scope and that they would be willing to put resources towards. They did not get a response to that. Nobody came forward with anything that they would suggest that they work on, and so the co-chairs followed up, saying, given that, they would recommend that they dissolve. So, this is coming back to the body to essentially implement that, to essentially repeal the section of code that created the City, County Schools Collaborative Committee. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion on this item? Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Christie. I, surprisingly, in this past week, had a school board member come up to me, being like, hey, we have this issue. Is there a way for the schools to work with the city to collaborate on these... Whatever issue that was? To which I said, I have no idea. I don't have a school anywhere near my district. So, what are the other opportunities for these school board members to maybe address these issues, if it works with the city in some way?
I think... Well, I guess one of the ways this happens is related to just executive staff teams. So, I think the city, the county, the school, school leadership, all do meet and collaborate that way. And I think issue by issue, there may be collaborations between members of the legislative I think when it came to issues identified, they would say something, for example, of we have an issue related to transportation, and we would recognize that ultimately, the body in which we would work on that would be the Transportation Commission. Or there might be an issue related to homelessness, but ultimately, that would go into the City, County Housing, the Homelessness Committee. So, I think there are a number of ways that individuals or the entities at large do coordinate. I think it varies a little, depending on what the topic is. But we do find other ways that we can coordinate around particular issues.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
Alder Madison?
Thank you. So, I served on that committee and was part of that discussion with Deputy Mayor, and Deputy Mayor is absolutely spot-on. But the other thing I want to say, too, I believe that there were quorum issues also with that group, and when I was part of the discussion, going back to what MGR asked about, is there was a question about, like, you know, working on these... When things come up, what do we do about it? But we were already sort of solving things, like when I am chatting about students who are homeless up at the motels, I just immediately go to some folks who serve on the Sandberg NRT to talk about those issues. So, it almost seems like the committee in and of itself was outdated to a degree, because folks have figured out how to work across city, county, and school agencies without necessarily... What I did not see was issues that we were having across our districts were coming to that committee to discuss and solve. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder Madison. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you very much, and I apologize, because I just joined, but I do have a question of the Deputy Mayor, and so I'm going to be very specific, because this is an incident that landed right in my district, and we had a group of students who were walking to school, and so there's like a 1.5-mile radius condition, but they were walking to school, and they called it the walking school bus. The problem with it was that mostly black and brown kids. The problem was, they were walking down Schroeder, which is a very dangerous street, and the problem is, is they had to do that in the wintertime. And now... And so, what I'm leading to is that there was a decision about putting those kids on a school bus. And my challenge is that, where is the communication link and the communication breakdown? Because I heard it, that it had happened, but as the Alder of the district and initiating this conversation with the school board, I did not get that feedback. And so, I just need to know a direction, and if this is dissolved, where is the link that when we have problems and we put those problems out, to get that feedback that it is still ongoing, or it is resolved? And so... And so that's something I'd like for you to speak to. I'm complete.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not, I can't say that I'm an expert on that particular issue. I think there is room for all of our entities to maybe identify what communications would, would be useful between MMSD and Alders of the district. I think we might be able to find ways to raise that and identify good communication channels for that. I'm not sure if the committee was play, to my knowledge, I don't think that the committee was playing that function to begin with. If it was, that's, that's not something I heard of. So I'm not sure that the dissolution of this committee would, would have an impact on that or, or create a loss there. But I think as, as a separate issue that we can look up and see if we, I, I think outside of the scope of this committee, we could look into whether we have as thorough a communication lines between the entities as would be useful.
Okay, a follow-up question is, is that as the recommendation for dissolution, it, and I think I heard you say that the ongoing discussion is finding what that link is? Is that something that came up to, for discussion, like who do, who do we go to if we have a question? Like I had a challenge with my walking school bus with the, I would have thought that that is where I would go with the, the city and the school board. So if that's dissolved and where would that linkage be and is that still being worked on?
I think that that would probably be something to take straight to the school district or to the school board. But maybe we can identify ways to identify some key contacts that would be helpful or some, some auto communications to make sure that Alders or of the districts are linked into.
Thank you.
I'll talk offline more about this. I don't want to hold the discussion, but that definitely is something that concerns me. And to find out what that linkage is so that there is feedback information to make sure that we're all informed. And I'm complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that maybe this is an opportunity for Alder onboarding, since each school board member does have specific schools that are like in their portfolio. And so making sure that each Alder knows who the school board member is that represents the schools that are in their district. That doesn't seem to be common knowledge. I've had to have that conversation with residents myself. So that, that might be an opportunity to improve our Alder onboarding. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you. I have a question and a comment. So the question, Christie, is, is this committee, does this committee has a, a copy of it at the county side?
No, this is a joint, this is, oh, you're saying is the legislation exists at the county This is a city, county, school committee, but it's, it's kind of owned and housed at the city. So there's not, there's not a counterpart ordinance at the county and at the school district, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, well, that's what I was asking. Thank you. Thanks, that was the question. And then as to, to, to add to the answers regarding MGRs and Alder McKinney's questions, also another way, another way that the school system, the school group is, interacts with the city, we have representation, they have representation, Plan Commission, they also have representation on Transportation Commission. So they can go to any committee, but there's, there's these mayor committees where they have a seat researchers for them. And then on regards to anything related to, to parking, traffic, whatever, you know, all that, all those safety matters associated to school, this, there's an actual committee that exists, well, it's not a committee, it's a, it's a, a group or something. I don't want to call, I don't know what to call it, but it's a group of people that have representation from the school district, a safety, a safety group that has representation from the school district as well as representation from, from engineering and transportation. And I, they meet regularly to address issues like the ones that Alder McKinney was discussing. I have had a few issues on my district and they have been very helpful. It's not, it's not something that is posted or anything like that, but for, whenever I was out, out of town, there was an issue and they had a meeting when I was out of town. So they actually were very gracious to invite me to the meeting so I can present the issue directly and then hear from them directly on what their perspective was. So there's a safety, a public, a school safety committee that, that involves Madison staff in it, that I can definitely put you guys in contact with if you need that information. So there's a lot of ways that the school is already interacting with the city. I think it is very accurate to say what Madison was saying, that they have figured out other ways to get, to get to the solutions that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Madison.
Thank you. I just want to, ooh, let me put this down before I forget. To Alder Harrington McKinney's thoughts, I do want to just give a couple of examples that might, may or may not be helpful for your district and any other folks in the district. But before we had the Sandberg Neighborhood NRT, I just partnered really and worked with the school really closely. So I do think at least, you know, folks connecting with the schools directly in your district with the principals is really helpful because you can hear where there may be city-related issues, like for example, crosswalks in front of Sandberg. I figure, you know, that's an issue with transportation or, you know, traffic engineering rather. And I was able to work with Yang and the school to, to problem solve it. And then for Hawthorne, which is in District 12, Alder Matthews and I met with city staff and school staff, I think, and school board members. So I do think it's important for all the Alders to at least form a communicating, you know, communication relationship with the immediate schools in your district and the school boards, and then know which city agency connects directly to the issue, if it's a city kind of thing to be worked on, for example. But that's my two cents again, and my last two cents because I need to eat.
Thank you. Alder Figaro Cole, is your hand still up from before? Or do you have more?
I'm driving, sorry. Can you, can you turn it down? Thank you.
Yep. And Alder Harrington McKinney, same question for you. Is your hand up from before or you have another question?
Question. And thank you, Alder Madison. And I took all of those issues, you know, I knew who to go to and all, but no, I had to determine where to go to. And I went to the school board, I went to transportation, and so it is being resolved. But it took me going around and through just trying to find out who I should go and have this conversation with. And so the reason that I brought it up is the loopback in terms of that communication, it is being resolved, but that loopback is not like from, I, I just need to know who the connection will be. I'm not saying to continue the committee because I know that they had a quorum issue. And I think the Deputy Mayor says that there might be an opportunity to designate someone in the school, because I, you know, I talked to the school board and I made a presentation at the school board. But if there is a link that would have solved the problem so that when feedback comes or solutions come, at least the Alder will be a part of those conversations in the future. I hope that that's, it sounded clear to me, but it might not be.
Yeah, if that was a question for me, I, I was really thinking about some of the things that have been mentioned, like connecting, making sure you have a connection with that school board member for just the sake of the geography. And also if there are issues related that you're working on, whether it's a project team communication or a newsletter or a certain lists you could be on, or, or, or just making sure that they have your contact information and are aware that you want to be informed on certain issues. So I didn't have any specific person. I, I think it's a little topic specific in terms of who the right people would be. But I, but I think there are ways, you know, that, as your colleagues just did, but also perhaps in other conversations, we could make sure that we're aware of what the opportunities are for those feedback mechanisms, whether it's email listservs or, or school board notes or what have you. So there's, there's a number of ways that I think can be plugged, that you can get plugged into something that probably doesn't have a bearing on this particular committee or this committee doesn't have a bearing on it.
Seeing no more questions or discussions, I will entertain a motion. Is there a second? Yes. What is it?
Well, it's to adopt the order which repeals.
To adopt the ordinance that repeals? Okay. All right. So moved by Alder Givenarajan, seconded by Alder Lankella. All right. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, pass. Passed. We will now move to the presentation on the Madison sister city delegation visit to Tapatitlan. I'm gonna say it wrong. Tapatitlan, okay, to Mexico. Go ahead.
I will give a, there is no presentation this time. I'll just be speaking and hopefully Alder O'Brien can join in as well later. But a couple of us about a month ago were pretty honored to go to Tapatitlan. Took me a while to learn that as well, which is our sister city located in the Jalisco region of Mexico, about an hour and a half away from Guadalajara, if that is familiar to anyone. We learned a lot over there in Tapatitlan and traveled to nearby towns and localities as well. And I just want to highlight a couple of things that we learned there that I think hopefully Alder O'Brien and I both took for ourselves and maybe the council can take as we do our business as well. But the big things were a circular economy. Wherever we went, we learned about how in Tapatitlan, they really want to prioritize sustainability in their resources. They want to make sure all of the materials are reused, recycled, and repurposed in any way to minimize waste and ensure that whatever they are making can stay in use for, for long as possible. We saw this with tequila factories that we were invited to, where the tequila comes from blue agave, which is a plant, and they cut it up, squeeze it and fertilize it. And every bit of that agave plant, whether it goes back into the farm as fertilizer or gets put somewhere else, every single part is reused or put into, used in some different way before that plant becomes the tequila that they produce in that area, which is very famously known. Other things we learned is about their tourism. That's personally what I took away the most. Tapatitlan is a very actively growing tourist area. They put a lot of effort into making sure that their fairly small town, which is, I want to say about half the size of Madison, is thriving in business and economy. And one way that we, Alder O'Brien and I saw was they showed us this board game, which is, think about it as Monopoly essentially, except it's Monopoly for Tapatitlan and it's based off in that city. It was completely in Spanish, so I don't know what any of it said and have not played it yet. But they, they sell it to people, they bring it around the entire country, and it is a form of bringing people into Tapatitlan to promote their own local industry and tourism. We also had a meeting with the Economic Development Director, along with several business leaders from hotels and the local businesses there. And they expressed a lot of interest in working with Madison to find distributors for their tequila and other, tequila's a really big industry there, to be 100% clear. They wanted to find distributors, they wanted to work with Destination Madison, and I believe the mayor's office is working on connecting the right people for all of that stuff. But it was a great opportunity to kind of work with a city that's very much in its like growing stages of a early economy. Other stuff, I think, it, it just showed the growing potential between Madison and Tapatitlan and how these sister city trips have a mutual beneficial relationship. Because as much as we learned from them about what they are doing and what we could maybe do better, they learned a lot from us as well, which I, for me personally, was very different when I look at the Obi Hero trip that we took earlier this summer. Because obviously, Obi Hero in Japan is a little bit more of a developed country, and maybe they don't have as much to learn from us as compared to Tapatitlan learned from us. So it was a great experience culturally, economically, to learn about their tourism, what they prioritize, how they use their land in terms of zoning or whether they don't do zoning. But yeah, I've spoken for long enough. I will hand it to Alder O'Brien if he wants to speak.
I, I want to echo my same sentiments of it was an honor to be able to go there and it was a fascinating way to travel and get to see folks and, and learn about the economy, learn about the arts, learn about the culture that is there. I think the, the biggest takeaway for me was the level of coordination that they have in between both the government and the private sector, in between their Chamber of Commerce and their Bars Association and their Hotels Association, and how they're all working extremely in coordination in a way that I think Madison could increase coordination among to really promote tourism and kind of layer in communications and so that they're not reinventing the wheel and reinventing systems. It was, it was incredible coordination. We also had the, the privilege of getting to talk with local farmers and some scientists and some environmental folks about the regions, agriculture and lakes and the environment and kind of, again, they really stress the circular economy and how that important that is to protecting their environment and also making sure that they're centering environmental justice and also growing their economy, whether it is with tequila or whether it is with protecting the lakes. We visited a small town called Chapala, which is on the largest lake, it's like four times the size of Lake Winnebago in Wisconsin, but it's facing a lot of the, the same runoff problems that our lakes around here are facing. And so they were very curious to learn, what are we doing? How are we working to protect our lakes and protect our water systems? And what does our coordination look like with the county and state? Because they also kind of have a similar thing there. It was also wonderful to get a go-toer of the university, to get to talk with some students and get to see not only high school students, but also college and kind of learn about how both that the UW system is a sister city college or university with Tapa. And the, the gifts and the trading and the conversation back and forth between the universities and, and the exchange there is, is quite remarkable and something that I think we should continue as well as with the high school. And we had a, had some wonderful high school guides who, who gave us a wonderful tour of the campus. And the way that they are teaching English and educating the students was, was quite fascinating and quite hands-on. So, I don't know, it was wonderful.
Thank you. And of course, your discussion about the lakes is quite timely since we're going to have our city lakes discussion next Tuesday at 6:00 PM that I hope all of you will come to. Other discussion or questions? Seeing none, there's nothing to approve on that? That was just a discussion? What? Sorry?
Sorry. I also just wanted to, to touch that we were there for Day of the Dead. And that was an incredibly beautiful, wonderful way to get to see how families come together. But one of the other things that I want to mention is that the students of the, of the Tapatitlan High School, they were so engaged in that celebration in a way that I don't see Madison students as engaged. I mean, they were, I, I believe it was a day off and they were all working together on assembling their altars and coming together. They were getting dressed up and painting each other's faces and sharing meals together. And it was like almost every student, and it was across the entire city. And that was really just a wonderful way to see the, the depth and the level of engagement that those students had, and then also how much they wanted to share that. They, they wanted us to ask questions. They wanted to invite us into their, you know, personal family memories and, and tell us about their loved ones and engage in a very active way in the civic process. um, and engage in a very active way in the civic process. Um, and, and we're very eager that folks from, not from that, from, from, not from their area, were here and wanting to learn about it. Um, and I think, I hope that was very enlightening for myself and I think others um, on the, the delegation. But I also think it was very enlightening for them. Um, and we have heard that like, they wanted to now come to Madison. And I, I hope that they do and I hope that we can continue to have this um, exchange. And I hope that um, they can bring some of that here.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the council office update.
All right. A few FYIs here. You can peruse. Call your attention to a couple of things. You will be getting some notifications in your Outlook calendars. These are helpful um, reminders of the holidays that are designated by ordinance as prohibited meeting days for city committees um, and are recommended to not schedule um, neighborhood meetings during. So it will give you a little bit of a helping hand, I think, to when you're scheduling your meetings. We try to keep, we try to, Debbie tries to alert you to those, but this just maybe will help for planning purposes. There's also, I provide a link here. You can find the full list um, of the ones also that aren't prohibited but are recommended not to. But some of you may be like, why is all this coming onto my calendar? So we wanted to make sure you knew what, what was going on there. Um, if you still have some lingering outs, outstanding, um, oops, expense reimbursement claims, please um, check your email. Liz provided um, another set of instructions for folks and reminder. So get those in by tomorrow if there are any still outstanding. Um, just another reminder about the 50-piece rule and some links to, to very helpful guidance. Um, another reminder, this will keep coming. Um, we'll continue to remind you about the accessibility requirements that are coming into effect, federal accessibility requirements that are coming into effect April 2026. And we will be continuing to ask your help um, with uh, when you're doing your blogging and other public communications. I also have some project updates for you. We um, are instituting work planning in um, individual staff work plans for 2026. And then we are also um, finalizing our agency work, work plan because we now have annual elections. So that gives us an opportunity to create an annual work plan, a cadence to get ourselves, hopefully to give ourselves more of a um, head start on, on things. And um, we also carried out annual employee check-ins with all council staff this month. Just wanted to let you know about that. And there's a link if you're curious about that type of thing. Um, there is a new Legistar Resources and Training repository that Liz has brought online with the Legistar Tips that she's been working on for quite a long time. She's been sending out to committee staff and now there's, they have a home. And so she'll be continuing to build that out. You can take a, you can, you can click there to, to review that. Um, BCC Staff Training and Resources, as you know, that one of the things that has come up when we're discussing BCC streamlining has been um, reviewing and updating um, resources for training of BCC staff to be able to support their committees. And so just wanted, uh, there's a little information about all the progress that's being made on that and we're continuing to make progress. Excuse me. Attorney Haas and I are the executive sponsors, sponsors, however you want to call it, of this project with Kara Kradowitz and Isaac in our office, Isaac Mathias in our office and Andy Hopkins kind of um, coordinating that makes sure everything is moving along. Um, I also wanted to let you know, um, we've been working on emerg, the city's been working on emergency preparedness and I attended a, a, I found incredibly useful multi-agency emergency management crisis tabletop exercise this month. Um, which put people from all different kinds of, you know, all different agencies together. Um, having an opportunity to sort of note down gaps in communications, et cetera, that I found incredibly valuable. I've got Dylan Brogan over here. So it was very, I found it, I'm very happy. We've been working on emergency preparedness, as you know, and safety. So I was really happy about that. Um, I have, um, the, we received the report for the Aldo Retreat. I need to send that out to you. I realize I didn't attach it. I will attach it. But there's going to be a presentation at um, on the, at the next CCEC meeting where Abba will come to um, talk through the reporting and give some suggestions about next steps. So, and then also if you have ideas for elements you'd like to have me incorporate into the 2026 Retreat, please reach out because I am going to start planning that ASAP because I'd like it to happen in May or June. So um, I think that is all I have on here. Yeah. Yes.
Any questions for Karen? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to future agenda items. We have not added any future agenda items and have not gotten to any of the future agenda items that are currently on the list. Uh, so the question is, is whether folks want to add any more things to the future agenda items list that we have yet to get to. Seeing none. All right. Then we will move into our final agenda item, which is a closed session item. When the Common Council Executive Committee considers the following matter, it may go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin, Wisconsin Statute 19.851D, considering strategy for crime detection or prevention. If the Common Council Executive Committee does go into closed session, notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 19.852 Wisconsin State Statutes that it may reconvene in open session without waiting 12 hours as specified in the statute. Um, and so the item is security protocols for elected officials in common council meetings. May I have a motion regarding closed session? And I believe I need to take a roll call vote. Hi. Oh, okay. Okay. So is there any objection to taking unanimous vote to move into closed session? Seeing none, we will give our tech staff a moment to get us into closed session.
We're just waiting for...
Recording in progress.
There we go. All right. So we are coming out of closed session in which security protocols for elected officials and common council meetings were discussed. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Any discussion or objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.